Welcome to the August 9, 2022, meeting of the Special Board of Education. Please rise and join me in the place of life. For business's approval, Jim is going to have a motion to approve the agenda. Second, Leah, thank you, and all favor. All right, next. To privilege to the floor. Presenting the floor is 30 minutes allocated in each meeting for questions and comments from the public. During this time, residents of the district may address the board. Remarks should be limited to five minutes or less. The board will listen to input, but will not respond except to specific concern, except to refer any specific concerns to the superintendent for follow up. Questions should be answered within a week if possible. Speakers, please state your name, address, and phone number so the district can make correspondence. And I will call on Mr. Bardine, please.
My name is Tom Bardine, six Ridge Meadows Drive, Spencerport, New York. Phone number is 585-414-9977. I'm responding to Mr. Gray Bracken's letter dated July 21st. It was the second part of his letter, first, and the rest of time allows. Second part of his letter, it has been noted that you frequently attend Board of Education meetings and have at certain times asked more questions that were either inappropriate or not able to be answered due to the limited context you provide. Given that the purpose of these meetings is for the board to take care of the business of the district, it is imperative that we use this time wisely to assist us in time management. It would be helpful if you could share with us your ultimate goal, or in other words, what you are seeking as a result of your attendance. The questions we ask this so that we can either get to that goal or let you know that what you add, what you seek is not possible. Please note that we are no way limiting your ability to participate in our meetings. We are simply hoping to find words for your solution. I do not believe that the United States of America or our Constitution is systematically racist. I believe that the New York State CRSC, Culture Responsent, Sustainable Education Framework, fundamentally flawed. Invite you to ask me for clarification on this. Suggest an open format where both you and members of our community may engage in open dialogue concerning the subject. My questions are not arbitrary, but fundamentally establishing the foundational education system. My end goal is to identify and have removed from our school district policies and programs that do not align with the basic values of our community. I want to state this so this may sound familiar to you. This was my answer on April 26, 2022, to a letter from Mr. Kevin Hutton, President of Board of Education, dated March 8, 2022. I pondered the fact that it was noted I frequently attend Board of Education meetings. I accept your thanks for my participation and interest in what you are doing. Concerning any inappropriate questions I have to ask for more clarification. Concerning any limited context, it refers to my question on bias and skin color as the following taken from page six of the New York State CRSE Framework. It's a 64-page document. I was taken there, I went to your website, your website said they call it the New York State Framework. So I'm trying to, here is where I found. A complex system of biases, structural inequities, inequities, because it's play deeply rooted in our country's history, culture, and institutions. This system of inequity, which routinely confers advantage and disadvantage based on linguistic background, gender, skin color, or again, skin color, and other characteristics must be clearly understood, directly challenged, and fundamentally transformed. There's a lot to unpack in that paragraph. But suffice to say, the answer to my question concerning the subject of skin color and bias is yes. Is it a yes or no? It's yes. That's on your website. I'm not making a judgment without just saying I asked a question. Didn't have enough context, and taking with the context, I probably answered. Concerning current events, the other part of the letter, some of my questions, Mr. Bracken is trying to try to answer those. Concerning current events, Mr. Bracken stated that the district does not make lesson plans available to review by the public. I think they shouldn't be public. Would you do that, or at least ask the district residents their preference as you did concerning wearing a mask during the pandemic? I'd also ask about any publications or documents concerning current events. That was not addressed by Mr. Bracken. My question still is, aren't current events in the school system? Are there any documents or publications used? And if they are used, may I see them? Now, if you need, if you need a copy of this, I can send it to Marcia or wherever. We have a lot of from back in April. Let us answer that question. And I won't take up any more than valuable time. And I probably, you might just see me at that.
Thank you, Mr. Bardine. Now, I'd like to ask Mr. Weaver to approach the podium.
Well, TJ Weaver, 585-746-0434. My address is 45 Recarried Drive, Washington, Washington. Um, I just wanted to, I don't have that much to say. I didn't really prepare anything today. Um, first of all, I just wanted to thank you all for your decision. I spoke previously about the removing of the minimum suspension guidelines. And the board did vote not to make any changes to that policy. So I just wanted to say I appreciate the board listening to the community on that matter. And I also wanted to say that I'm very optimistic about this coming school year. I think that our school district has a lot of challenges and problems coming into the school this, coming to the school year. And I don't think that that's, you know, anything special for Spencerport. I think that a lot of districts do. But I just wanted to say that I think that we all work together. A lot of these challenges and problems, we can work together and solve. And that's about it. Thank you all, and I just wanted to say I think we're going to have a great school year. We all kind of work together, the board and the community, to solve the challenges that we face. Thank you.
Thanks, TJ. I appreciate it. Moving on to consent. Is there any, let me ask this question. Is there any conversations where we are moving that one portion out and going separately? Is there any other questions about consent and denna? It's due at this time, so I'll explain it. Could I have a motion to approve consent and denna?
The donation is going to be moved as a separate item, right? 4.23.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent that general with the certificated and classified addendums, with the exception of item number 4.23 donation.
All right, and I have a second, please. David, and all in favor.
I would like to make a motion to approve item 4.23 donation.
Have a second, please. Mike, and all favor. So.
Well, just give a reason, right?
Due to personal connection to.
It's okay. No, I understand what you've stated.
Okay. Okay, we're on to Board of Education. Oh, yes, wait a minute. Yes, I am sorry. My bad, totally, because I did this, please, please.
So in the consent agenda from the Board of Education that they just approved is the appointment of our new Director of Security. So I formally want to welcome Chris Mears to our team. I shared with our team, and I believe that the board would concur, Chris, that you really have obviously a proven and a long history of community service to the larger Spencerport community. And we're really excited that you bring your talents to our administrative team. And we're looking forward to working with you on our security initiative. So welcome to our team.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
Do we still call you Chief or call you Chris?
This is great. Just one quick word. Thank you so much to the board and superintendent for the welcome. I'm really excited to get started. I, this is, to me, just a great natural progression from where I am to where, you know, where we're going. So again, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for all the cooperation and partnership through the years. And I'm looking forward to it. Can't wait to get started. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Okay, all right, we'll move on to Board of Education reports. Leah and Megan and I had a great opportunity to attend the administrative retreat last week. Again, thank you to council for allowing us to participate in that. There was a lot done in two short days and stuff. There was a, in the first morning, we had a great, it was kind of long morning circle, which, but it was facilitated well. And the, yeah, the bottom line is a lot of stuff was heard during that circle. I heard things about giving grace for mistakes. There was a lot of talk about safety. Most stated they feel pretty safe in our buildings and stuff. So there was a lot of praise about the safety work that's been going on this year and going forward. Then that afternoon, Kevin McCallum from Brighton, the superintendent from Brighton, facilitated a meeting about the strategic plan and kind of drew out thoughts and ideas and the direction that that group of people thought the strategic plan should head into. And I, and I thought that was, it was a great process. Having had to sit through some very painful strategic planning meetings in the past. That was, it was fun. It was actually an enjoyable process, and it seemed to really pull things out pretty well. So, so that's now back in Kevin and Kristen's hands to kind of draft out some vision, mission, and goals and stuff. So we look forward to seeing that. And then Spetlana from Bosie's on Thursday morning gave a great presentation about DE and I. Do we, do we have that presentation that we can center on? But it, I mean, it loses something not being there and hearing some of the exercises we went through as she was pulling information out. Spetlana.
So, well, she's our Director of Diversity from Monroe One.
Oh. And she, she, some exercises during it where she would pull information out of the audience and people that, you know, so participation and stuff. And then in the afternoon, there was lots of planning time. One thing that came out, I know Megan heard it, I did as well, is, you know, during our, our work as building legations, you know, it's really, if we can, to the degree that we can, is to really be just kind of encouraging and be, be that positive voice to help just kind of bolster the feeling that, I go back to what I said at the beginning. There is a lot of talk during the circle about grace. You know, mistakes are going to be made, but, you know, that we need to just accept that, learn from them, and move on and not, and then basically assume no intent that the mistakes were mistakes and that we, we have a lot of great people doing good work, especially on our administrative team. Let's see, the other, that's all about that. It was great, and the social hour, it was fun to see that many people come to it and that many people stay around for it. They, people didn't just coming bail, they, they stayed for it. I won't say who the last spot standing was. A couple of people in this room, maybe. But, but it was fun. It was, it was really good, and it was a great time to get to it. Again, thank you for letting us be a part of that. The only other thing, there's building meet and greets coming up. So if you, I know my schedule is a lot more flexible than most, but if you have the ability to go to your building's meet and greets, you know, or go to the, the bus orientation, that's always a fun one to see the incoming kindergarten class and their parents with the fear in the headlights look going through bus orientation, so.
The parents mostly.
Yeah, parents mostly, for sure. Parents mostly, for sure, so. But anyway, so that's, that's all I have. Oh, MCSBA, there is going to be a new, the website is being totally revamped. That is going to be one of the main modes of communication between the association and all of the districts and stuff. So there's not going to be the, the newsletter that goes out and that nobody read and things like that, so.
Always read.
Yeah, always, yeah, I'm sure.
Yes, all the time.
When I was writing it, my last one, I was going to put, please email me if you actually write this. But I didn't. But there'll be some two-way communication capabilities in there. There'll be a chance for people to share best practices and things like that. So I think we're, we're going to head into a new era with the association under any leadership.
I was just enjoying what I asked, because I'm going to get real busy.
I'm just echo what Gary said. I appreciated the opportunity to attend the administrative retreat. I spent the bulk of my time with the elementary principals and was beyond impressed with their ability to work together while always keeping student safety, staff safety, and well-being in mind. It was really valuable and a great two days, so thank you again.
I'm just going to echo that. I spent my time with the high school team, and I will tell you that during breaks and lunch most, I watched Mr. McCabe responding to parent emails and working out student schedules, of which I got a phone call when I was there about my own kid's schedule. I promised I wouldn't bother him on his lunch to manage it. So even though I think it was a day of lots of work being done, even on the breaks, there was work being done. There was moments of fun, not the spoon in the mouth, which of ping pong balls, but the rest of it was fun. But it was very nice to see an involvement of the school staff with each other, which is something I think most of us probably don't get to see, how principals and directors work together. And so that was really enjoyable. So listen to their, even their casual banter, it's really felt more like a team than you usually see when you're just walking in the building, say the day. Thanks.
Nothing.
Thank you. So we're going to transition to some of our superintendent reports and work.
This year, with the support of the SWAN, we've also added a program at the middle school level just to support our 506 students as well. So one of the things, though, that I think is really important is some of our brain. It's a little work that we're trying to do. So I think if you were part of the retreat last week, you heard some of this. I'm going to give credit to Summer and Sudan for their work with us. But as we build these relationships, we know that SCL, that's a very well supporting our students. We also recognize too that we have to provide rigorous learning opportunities for our students, provide them authentic learning experiences that perhaps some real-world applications. So with that. So with that, here we have this triangle, obviously with relationships being at the heart of it, by knowing that we need to connect with individuals as our former superintendent of, on a super new to say, you know, connected, then expect in terms of washing those connections in the classroom so you can increase those expectations that you have for students. With that, I'm going to turn it over to.
So we just passed out for you a little hash sheet. In true educator form, we have a bit of a lesson piece here for you so that way you can engage with us as we're presenting for you. So as Ty mentioned, relationships, rigor, and real world were the three areas that we were focusing on this evening with the summer program. And as you listen to some of the information, if you're making connections to relationship rigor or real world, please feel free to jot down notes and/or if you have any notice or wonders that you'd like to share with us at the end, we'd love to know. So Ty mentioned the Jump and Lead Program. We wanted to share with you some of the smiling faces. These are beautiful young people that we have the opportunity to spend some time with. Summer and I were able to go in and visit, which was such a treat for us, being new to the district, to be able to go in and to meet some of our teachers at the K, at the, at the K1 and also at the 25 level. There were 13 teachers that support our summer academy at the 25 level. There were several, there's one in each of the elementary, I'm sorry, two in each of the elementaries for the Jump and Lead Program, and just around 280 students who are being serviced in this, in these programs along with our middle-level students. So with the Jump and Lead, I think I did mention this, so forgive me for being redundant. In terms of the Jump and Lead, that program focuses primarily on our K level, and it's really about our readiness levels for them as they enter into our school system. Whereas the LEAP program is helping to reinforce many of those skill sets, both academic and social-emotional, that our students have had over the course of their first year with us. And two things we wanted to highlight is that our students are receiving explicit reading instruction during this time. So while there is opportunity for purposeful play, and there's opportunities for developing social-emotional learning experiences, there is also really focused skill time as well. And we also wanted to highlight that while the program focuses on our youngest learners, it also provides opportunity for our older students to have a chance to, to basically have an opportunity to work with those young students through the capacity of an educator's viewpoint. Each of our four principals were very generous with us at the elementary level and shared information and some, some photos of our students here. So with Bernaby, what we heard from Dave, there's a lot of agency building with our students. They, he and his teachers were talking about this independence and self-advocacy that their students are experiencing. I was here, actually, I took this picture here of the students getting ready for the morning. So they were all coming in and working on organizing themselves before they were ready to go into the classroom. And each morning, they have time where they're able to work in different centers, really that purposeful play.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. In terms of student agency, what does that mean? That's a new term for me.
The student agency is their, their ability, their skill set, and their ability to really advocate for themselves and to think, to be critical creative thinkers.
So one of the things, I'm sorry to interrupt. So one of the things that we've been trying to promote, what we've shared with our families as well, just the whole notion of inquiry, where students are discovering learning on their own. We're not just telling them, we're not spooking them. They're actually exposed to relevant information, or, you know, primary documents, and then they start drawing their own conclusions.
In terms of can now use, some of the, the pieces here that we just wanted to highlight was the different approaches to the learning so that, as you can see, there's opportunities for the students to work in small groups or in pairs, and also in terms of just really different modalities of, of interaction. One was, one of the only schools, was the only school that decided to attach a theme to their work this summer. So they have this theme around oceans and really helping students to make connections to the purposeful play, but through the lens of ocean. And Terry Taylor wanted to highlight, again, the student, the older students that were a part of the program. So in terms of some of our graduates, our recent graduates, as well as some of our students that are current high schoolers, the opportunity they have to really take on these experiences as a student teacher, if you will. We also thought it would be important for you to hear from our parents in terms of their perspective on the program. And if I just.
Just.
Thanks, Mark.
Hi, I'm Audra. My son Tyler goes to the Leap Into First program. He also did the community program. I do think we sometimes have a beneficial, because he's not going all summer long without having any kind of education instruction or federal and place. So this is a good thing to front him for first grade, and also I want to get him a version as well. And he enjoys it.
Tell me what you love about Leap Into First. So we can transition, we're even, I'm ready to miss on the case, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening. So thinking about, you know, the summer programs and the goals and the outcomes that we were hoping to achieve and that we're able to see in action, you know, was a lot of circle work. So really both targeting the emotional needs of the students while having learning goals. So sometimes the circle work would incorporate a story that they were just doing, and then they made personal connections to that story. So they're building community as a group, but then they were also doing their academics at the same time. A lot of focus on literacy as well as math skills. And they were taught, they were teaching us, actually, explicit, explicit strategies of how they were learning to connect with their guests. And here are two of our friends that we get to hear from on this very topic.
It is when you talk or type into it. And then if you say it wrong or type it wrong, then it will come up in your trying, that's what they're saying. Yeah, type it ten percent. Yeah.
They both agree, it was a lot. And then we have this ceremony. Do you share with us a few of the reasons why you're excited for the extended summer training?
See, teachers refresh my brain.
Refresh your brain? What do you mean, refresh your brain?
Can remember things that, so I can refresh my brain by remembering things that I don't forget the old school year.
What else do you like to do?
Do recesses, please.
Do you share with us a few? So here we have an overview, as Ty referenced earlier, the SL program or the EML program, which I had the pleasure of visiting as well. And there were two different classrooms. So there was a teacher working with, differentiating with a lot of different students in one room, and then a second teacher working with a even smaller group on some language skills and where they work with acquisition. So that was neat to see. What was important, I think, that the teachers can do is that they wanted all of their students to access the content in a way that made sense for them. And so they were really, I thought, you know, very masterful at breaking it down in different ways and making sure, doing a lot of checking for understanding, making sure the kids were with them prior to moving on. But at the same time, they also had a strong sense of community. And so we wanted to highlight for you guys kind of the, the beauty and the cultural connections that naturally happen in SL classrooms. And so I think that they naturally are inclined to be able to share information about culture. And so I really see this as, you know, kind of a distinguished example of welcoming and affirming environment. So there we have it. What was also interesting is their ability to infuse that SCL work in with the content. You know, one thing that stuck out, stuck out was when they talked about SCL and math and during this math dialogue, so that it's really transcending across all the subject areas. And the kids are really getting more of that connection piece through all of their academic learning. So here we have our students themselves welcoming us in terms of their cultural home language.
Hello, my name is Sean. This is how you say hello, my name is Sean.
There's a lot for me to go. Two, one. Three, two, one.
Hi, my name is Rob. This is how I say hello here.
So there you can, you know, kind of sense that pride in their culture and also their ability to connect, being Spencerport students and living and experiencing the town as well. So it was fun to see. Being spent before students and living and experiencing the town as well. So it was fun to see.
Hello, my name is Sean.
Okay. And then last but not least, we also had our middle school project, credit. So just, we were fortunate to have a small number of students that were, you know, perhaps needing some additional social emotional engagement as well as academic support through the summer. And focusing on the four core areas as well as PE. With a small amount of students, you really get that time with the teacher to be able to have those social conversations, to be able to relax a little bit. Going at a little bit of a different pace in summertime, but also be able to maintain your skills. And so the, the middle school also noted that people focus, social emotional importance as well as their academic skill builder. So now if you had a chance or not, but thinking about the three Rs. You're here to answer any kind of questions or connections that you are making or any questions that you had about.
I just have, this is not even one of the three Rs, but I just noticed the numbers at Canal View were so much smaller. Is there, do we have an understanding of why that would be?
Yeah, so really this is a, these programs are geared for tier three students. And so our, our teachers, starting when we go through kindergarten screening, they identify students and then they reach out to them. Same thing with our K O one and then our two through five as well. So we start with that. I think we have some challenges just with family commitments over the summer. I think that's what I was attributing now to, wasn't without trying, but I know that they went through their list and then they start going through their tier two list as well.
Okay. Can I ask just a quick, in relation to that, is it based by homeschool? So are students in their
Yes.
elementary schools?
Yep.
Teachers in the same school or teachers from other areas of district?
For the most part, so with our jump and leap programs are all at their home school. The two five academy was held at Burnaby and then the L programs held at Canal View. And I just would like to, and sorry, then the middle school programs actually held at the high school just due to some of the issues, you know, asbestos at Cosgrove. But I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to transportation. They've done a phenomenal job. We met with Julie and her team last August, just based on some of the challenges. And we'd like to go with a tier program this year. So drivers pick up the middle school first and they go back, pick up the two five academy. And they go back and pick up the jump and leap students. Also they're age appropriate and that's soon as they finish dropping off the jump and leap, they wait for twenty minutes, then they pick up the Cosgrove and then kind of reverse it as well. So Julie and her team.
That was gonna be my actual next statement, because actually that, this, they were all transported in, which is remarkable for a summer program. So it's a great opportunity for families who were able to take advantage of.
I think that's a feedback we received too, when there's transportation available. You know, families, you know, it's one less thing for them to worry about. And obviously these are the students that we're trying to target to provide this additional support. I had the opportunity to meet with our first grade team leaders are together today. And one of the individuals was supporting the LEAP program. So LEAP ran for four weeks, so it ended on Thursday. Summer Academy goes till this Thursday to the eleventh. And this teacher, this first grade teacher who was filling in for them, just said, the work that she was doing by using OGs or Arm Gillingham. We subscribe to that all of our kindergarten, first grade teachers, special ed and reading teachers will be utilizing. Just following the protocols with Arm Gillingham, her teacher that the students will have next year. Was just amazed with their progress and what they know already. So it was pretty impressive.
That's, that's a question I had too, under your relationships thing is, is they, these kids obviously made some ties with people during the, during the summer. And so to what degree, well, maybe some of the kids being in the same classes or is there a spot going into that or is it just at random still?
I think our, our teachers do a really good job in the spring of identifying where the students are going to be placed the following year. And then the principal may make some adjustments over the summer based on some of the experiences that they either observed with the feedback that we'll receive from the individuals that work in the programs. But I would say that ninety-five percent of the, the rosters are pretty much solidified in the spring with some adjustments based on special circumstances.
Is there any way that these teachers that were involved will have any contact with some of the kids?
Absolutely. So with, you know, Wilson kind of served as the, the student administrator for the two five academy. She gathers, you know, information, notes and provides it to, part of her responsibilities to then disseminate that to individuals that will then have those students come to Denver and similar with their jump.
For the middle school. For the middle school. Go ahead. I just wanted to add, Carrie, at the middle school, some of the conversations that we had and we've been talking with the kids. They were recognizing they were doing some pre-teaching or pre-learning of the sixth grade content. So, and I also had the opportunity, we were talking about the orientation coming up and the kids connecting. I didn't know you four, but I'll see you in orientation. So some of those natural connections are being made as well. I was actually gonna ask if the middle school program was for a specific grade? Was it just for sixth, rising sixth graders? No, it was for middle school years. I, I would like to see it expanded. So this was our pilot year for middle school. You know, I think probably somewhere lower to elementary, all of the students that you want to attend, don't attend because of conflict. But I hope to, that we'll grow that. One of the things that we did at the middle school is we charged the teachers to really try to be creative with not only the content, but sort of the special area classes. And the students really, when I went with Jim, shared that they, they loved the art class. And they were allowed in the high school to do some things that they typically maybe wouldn't do in the old school, like they were doing some sculpture. Visiting the nature center. So some of those more extra type of events really trying to hook them. And so we're gonna build upon that next year and the transportation was for, how many students were we able to get for the middle school program? Do you know the totality? So small, small classroom sizes, like I said, some good pre-teaching to help build kids' confidence going in, that we want to build on that.
That's seven, eight or six, eight kids? We see most.
Going into six, eight, like incoming six, eight.
Okay, got it. Because most was truly seven, eight.
Yeah.
But you.
How was attendance was? I'm assuming attendance of students was good throughout summer?
I think, you know, there's a couple of weeks. They were gonna go away, but I think though, one of the things that we received too from our kindergarten, first grade teachers is to reduce it to four weeks. Cause it was definitely, it was five weeks and they just encourage us just to implement that. Our students and their endurance. So. How long's a day? It's a three hour day.
At the middle school level, I encourage the teachers that the students who pay have excellent attendance. So we, again, we want to get more students that we identified, yeah.
So there's no doubt that more time in the classroom and structure is certainly good for kids. I have those for that. So these students were all identified, reassessed. Is there any prompt, process in place, program in place, or metrics in place to follow up with those same students to identify? This really helped. I guess where is the, is that taking place? And I know some of these programs are in their infancy, so I guess is that on the program?
I think that's a really good question. I think that's part of the charge that we have then for our first half, they released it on November fourth. As these students, as we look at through our MTSS process, we really do a deep dive into each individual and how they do academically. So they'll have a, every teacher will know who was affiliated with our summer program. They'll be able to kind of report out through November fourth in terms of their progress and where they are compared to some of the peers.
Thank you all.
Thank you. It's one thing. Thanks everyone.
Thanks.
This was chucked up pretty good. I'll go by it. Doors are open, falls down.
You are ready to transition. I have, we have Drew online. Drew, are you, are you there?
I am. Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Thank you.
Well, you guys ready for me to go ahead? I'm sorry. I was just wanting to be mindful here.
Yeah, we're all set.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. It does say that the host disabled participants, screen sharing however.
One second while we figure that out. I apologize. There you are, sir.
Alrighty, let me go ahead and share and just let me know if you all are able to see it. You should be seeing kind of a little mock board doc site with Spenceport Central School District. Can you all see this? Okay. Well, I appreciate you all letting me present tonight during your meeting. So thank you in advance and apologies for the confusion on my end with timing, but won't keep you very long. Really what I'm gonna do tonight is just cover at a very high level, you know, what a normal user, a normal board member would be, but doing, seeing in the board doc system here. And then I'll save about five minutes at the end, ten minutes of presenting, five minutes for questions if we do have any. What we're gonna be covering today is strictly just the user side, but I will cover what the public can see compared to what the private can see. And typically how most of our districts in the state of New York set their site up is they'll have this URL hyperlink on their current district website. In New York, a lot of them like to have it on their board of education tab or the agendas and minutes tab on their current district website. So when the public or any of your members hit that tab, it's gonna automatically pull up this featured page in board docs. You'll hear me say a few times during the presentation, a one stop shop mentality, which is, you know, really what we're going for with board docs. An easy and clean archive for your public and your board to find information, a clean storage and a clean release as we make updates, changes, activate and deactivate any agendas or anything that we're working on. So really the name of game is efficiency and transparency with our system here. When we land on the featured page, and again, I'm logged in as a user currently. This is a place for us to post any of our most recently released or any of our most important material for quick access. So I can see I have my last two board meetings. I do have an upcoming August eighteenth meeting. I have some documentation I've posted, any upcoming events I have, one of our most recently updated policies and any of our recently worked on board goals. This is completely customizable as we can kind of see here. We can put district background, we can include our board members with any information or background or even share contact information on the private side for our other board members to have. Coming over to this meetings tab here, this is where we'll find our archive of all of our previous agendas and minutes. Or if we had released an upcoming meeting, we'll find that in here as well. Our meetings are keyword searchable and we can also navigate by meeting date, just by clicking through each year. Something I'll quickly mention is if you guys would like to have an archive of your already, you know, generated and released agendas and minutes in board docs. We can most definitely get those in the system. They won't be in the board docs format that we're getting ready to see. But they will be keyword searchable however, because board docs, we still can search inside of included attachments. So as, as long as they're in here and as attachment, they'll show like this meeting date here. But we'll just go ahead and click the available attachments once we open the agenda. If we have any type of virtual participation or do a live stream. Your publishers, when they release the agenda, will be able to include that live stream link or your Zoom link directly on that meeting date. Whether that's publicly or privately for just our members. And we'll go ahead and view the agenda here. Now keep in mind, I'm logged in as a board member, which is why I'm able to see this executive content here. But as your publishers are working on the agenda, anything that's posted in the public content will be what's publicly available. Anything in the administrative or executive content, executive more often than not just being your board will be completely private to anyone with a user login. So again, what's shared in public will be public. Anything in these two fields will be completely private from the public. How the agenda is laid out is we'll have our agenda items and categories on this left-hand side. And as we scroll through the agenda and click through particular items, you can see here I've clicked item five B. Any of that supporting content and detail is gonna be found here on the right-hand side. Notice for this item, it's approval of resignations for the district. So for the public content, I've posted name, position and effective date. For my board to see, I've actually posted the resignation letter. So just wanted to give some transparency of kind of what we would separate, what the public can see from, from what our private users can see on our agenda here. Now what's really nice with this is it's gonna save your publishers a lot of time, those individuals that are actually putting together the packet, meaning that they don't necessarily have to make two versions or worry about, you know, which version is seeing what. We're creating one agenda, but we can separate who can see what on that agenda. For our attachments, very simple display. You know, we're not necessarily putting them in inside the packet so that we have to, whether we're doing digitally or paper, we don't have to scroll through our, our full, you know, attachment or find that at the end of our packet. They're all gonna be directly related to that particular agenda item. And you can see here, anything with a little paper icon as I click into it, we'll see that there will be attachments related to these particular items. Now the agenda itself is keyword searchable as well. So anytime we're in a particular feature in board docs, you're able to search. So very easy for our board or the public to find, you know, particular information. And this is also a very nice feature to have digitally, because if you guys are in session and you needed to bring up, you know, maybe from a previous meeting, a resolution that you guys discussed, or maybe a particular discussion topic that we discussed. It's very easy for us to keyword search and find those particular items. I'll go to a very basic minutes approval here. So this was my July meeting and we can see here that we're voting on June minutes. A nice feature for your publishers is on the backend, we have a transcription tool, which will allow your board secretary or whoever's moderating your minute, your minutes to be able to take your minutes during a live session and actually record your voting during a live session. This also allows them to create their minutes in our, in our product. So we don't necessarily have to store and convert from Word to PDF then post on the website. It's all one very fluid motion in here. We can see we have our June minutes here for approval. And being that this is a former meeting, I can see that that motion did carry. So we can track our motions on any resolution items. I think this is a phenomenal tool and one of our public favorites. They don't necessarily have to wait for next month's minutes to be approved. If there's a particular recommended action that they're very, very interested in. We'll be able to see if it was passed or not. Same goes for the board. So if you guys ever, again, as I mentioned, wanted to look at a previous resolution during a session. It'll be at our fingertips here in the meetings archives. Going back to my August meeting, I, I wanted to point out one last feature just on the board member side is the ability to take private and personalized annotations. This is completely private to that individual's login. So it'd be like, you know, a handwritten notes on your packet or what have you. They're not shareable. It is only completely private to that particular user's login. So for any questions or discussion topics we wanted to bring up, that's a way for us to customize notes on our personal agenda in here. If, if we're seeing the agenda here and this is not how we lay out our current version, not a problem. We're really just gonna take your current packet and get it into the digital format and we'll train your publishers and create their first agenda with you all. So as far as the labeling, the categories, itemization, everything's gonna remain the same. It's just gonna be in this digital format here. The nice thing with board docs as well is just the cloud-based mentality that we have. So when your publishers release an agenda, so as I released August eighteenth agenda. I have email distribution turned on so that when I do release a new agenda, it's gonna notify all of our board members via email. And then it'll ask them to click the hyperlink to go to board docs to log in to see their private agenda. So it'll notify your board. And then you can turn on an auto release. On my site here, it's twenty-four hours in advance to my meeting date. So I know that this won't be available to the public until August seventeenth at seven PM. It'll automatically release to them if it's active agenda. The other nice thing with, and again, that is customizable. So depending on, you know, however early you guys release the agendas, we can, we can specify that. The other nice thing is, is if we do release an agenda and it's an active agenda. We realize there's a mistake or we need to make an addendum or add a new item. Your publishers can simply come into the agenda and make that change. And when they save, we know that it will refresh in real time for our board and the public, even if it's already released. So anytime we're looking at any material in board docs, it'll always be the most current or most up-to-date version. So we're never gonna have to unpublish, re-convert to Word, back to PDF and then republish again. It's all gonna be one fluid motion here. So that's really it on the meetings tab. I real quickly wanted to cover this policy tab, which allows you to store your policy book in board docs. Very similar to the agenda side of things. We have all of our different sections. And again, this is, these are just my policies. We're gonna get all of your policies in here. But we can navigate by section. It's keyword searchable. On our policies, we can see the status of that policy. We can see if there's any linked legal codes to this policy as well. And then we can also review when it was last revised and last reviewed. So it gives us great visibility as we're updating policies or reviewing them or going from first to second to legal review or public review. Great organization. And then on the backend, on the private side, it'll actually allow you to track. And then on the backend, on the private side, it'll actually allow you to track any redlining or any changes that you've made throughout that policy's lifespan. So great resource for the public. Again, one-stop shop agendas and minutes. Also have our policy books in here. Last feature is this library tool. This is one of my favorites for transparency. You have a general events and a strategic goals section. In the general section, this is really a place for you all to be as creative as you'd like. I see commonly used in here, shared privately with just board members. Our Friday notes that go out weekly, maybe a board president or superintendent releases weekly updates. A great place to share those in here. And again, if it's private, only our users can see. I've seen everything from budget reporting to superintendent newsletters that go out, contracts, you know, reporting, handbooks, calendars, you name it. Again, it's a, it's a place for us to be very transparent and for anything board or district related, we're going to find in board docs, even if it's not necessarily on an agenda. You can also track events. Pretty self-explanatory. We can just track any upcoming events that we may have. Again, these can be found on the featured page if we feature them. And then lastly is our strategic goals section. Along with our voting tool, this is probably one of our fan favorites. This will allow you to maintain and track any board goals that you're working on. Doesn't even necessarily have to be board goals. It could be contracts you have, new hires we need, any COVID policy updates. Again, just like with the general section, we can get very, very creative with the goals we track in here. And the nice thing with this feature as well is you can track the goal progress. What this means is as your publishers are creating your agendas in the system, they can tag goals to those particular agenda items. So I can see anytime this goal was tagged to an agenda item, and I can always go reference when the last time this goal was discussed. So it looks like my upcoming August 18th meeting. And this is going to pull up that particular agenda item where we discussed it. The board doc site also has a full site search. So again, this will search anything by keyword in our site, included those included attachments. And we also have what is called, just on the user side, what's called our meta search. So this meta search will search any board docs, public-facing material from any of our customers nationwide. We're just under 5,000. And I want to say we have about 320 clients in the state of New York. Obviously, this is a very, very broad search, so it's going to max me out at 250. But this is nice if you wanted to, you know, see what neighboring districts are discussing policy-wise, maybe how they're, you know, setting up their agenda or using line items, anything like that. So great resource here to see what all of our other customers are doing with the system and also nice to look at other policies from other districts as well. I'll close with any board doc subscription does have unlimited support and training, which is available to any of your members with this help option here. We will conduct formal implementation training at the beginning of your subscription if we did move forward. So we typically train the publishers first and then we'll train our board or normal users afterwards. And full turnaround time is about two and a half months to be up and running live. What that means is we have our full site created. We have all of our previous archive of all of our previous agendas and minutes in. All of our members are trained and we're ready to use board docs for our first meeting is about two and a half months. With this help option as well, if you were a one-off member that wanted to do a workshop or a one-off training, this is available to you at any time. Again, it's totally free. You can schedule as much time as you'd like. And our support team's 24/7/365. You can give them a call at 2:00 AM the night before a board meeting. Someone's going to answer the phone. I like to say that they're scary, scary good. So if I went over a little bit, I do apologize, but that is all I have for you guys tonight. And I know that was a lot of info to take in it in 15 minutes, but I did want to make sure to ask if there was any questions on, on this here.
So the keyword search, do we have to actually set up keywords or it'll just look for the words that are put into the search?
Yeah, yep. It'll just look for any words that are put in, you know, as we create the agendas and create our material in here. So there's not, no setup as far as you're on your end.
And on the, on the section that you called Friday notes, is that we're able to attach documents to, can your study team attach things to that?
Absolutely. So if you can still see my screen here, if I hit, and I'm a publisher in board docs, so this is why I have the editing rights. But if I edit this item, again, this shows public content, but being that is a private item, they, they can't see it because it is locked. But if we'd like, we can still post it in the executive field for just extra security. But you'll see these attached files for anything that we create in board docs. So we can either click to add files or we can drag to drop to add files on anything we post in the system.
Here. Is there anything within the system that allows us to communicate with one another? Or is it just viewing the documents that have been loaded into board docs?
So we decided just for open meeting laws and, and how that goes with communication, that this is just simply a storage platform. So there's not necessarily a messaging tool or a way to communicate between one another. That being said, however, we do have a feature called the workflow in the system that will allow your members to submit documents to your publishers for approval. I really like this feature for security and organization for those members that are, you know, receiving documentation, reporting from departments, or, you know, if we had a finance report or anything like that. Your members with logins can come into this my agenda items tool. They can create a new item and they can select which meeting they, they'd like to submit an item to. So this is an old meeting, but it's the only draft I have. So this will allow me to submit an item and select an approval tree. And right now myself as a board secretary and Angela as my superintendent are my approvers. This is completely customizable, however, so, you know, you can customize your approval tree. The really nice thing I like with this is especially if we're sharing sensitive documentation, we know it's going to be secure in the system. And also when we submit these items, it'll allow us to track the workflow. So I'll real quickly just say this is July budget report. And I'll submit this item. And then notice down here, it'll allow me to track who submitted and at what time, who's the current approver and who will be approving next. Now, this isn't a communication platform, but if I'd like, I can make edits and route back to the submitter. So when you, when you route back to the submitter, it can be with a note that says we need to change this item here. And then they can make that change and then resubmit to your workflow. So not necessarily a communication tool, but it allows us to submit reporting, discussion topics, anything like that. Anytime one of our members in-house or in district would like to submit an item, whether it's just a normal, you know, monthly report or they would like to request to speak or anything like that. It's a phenomenal tool to use.
We have the ability to brand it, you know, the parts that are public facing.
When you say branded, can you, can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. So there's like continuity with our website in terms of aesthetics.
So, you know, not necessarily too much branding, but like, so on your site logo, your main site landing page, all of your printing, that is all completely customizable with any type of logo or how you'd like to structure the site and font size and all that fun stuff. But as far as the layout is of how the agendas are set up and all that, it's going to stay the same of how we've seen on this demonstration here.
So Drew, I have two questions. One is there an iOS slash Android compatible mobile app?
There is no app. However, it can be used on any device with internet access or data.
We just have to use the browser then.
Yep. It'll just be this link here.
And what does that look like? I mean, obviously on a full screen laptop, it's.
But yeah, I mean, so we recommend either laptops or tablets. You can look on it on a phone. Attachments get a little clunky. So I don't necessarily recommend using a phone during a meeting, but it is accessible if you wanted to review documents on your cell phone. But we do recommend, you know, either, you know, Chromebook, iPad, any type of tablet or laptop to have during, during the actual meeting itself.
The district should just supply us all.
Yeah, right?
One last question, Drew, just to clarify. So, oh, you referred to Friday notes. We have a term for that. It's irrelevant. If there was a question that I wanted to jump on, let's just say that there was a, there was a post concerning problem X at school Y, and I wanted to insert a message in there to the superintendent or the author of the document to ask the question, ask for clarification. There's no way to do that. Like this is truly not, it's a repository, not a communication tool.
That, that is correct. Yes.
Have to like take that piece.
So I, I'm sorry to cut you off, but there is, you know, the communication's not in board docs, but let's say that, you know, in, in reference, I know that's not how you guys label your Friday notes, but for my Friday notes tier, let's say, you know, they post a Friday notes and you have a question or want to bring something up. You can hit the share option and then select email. Let me pull up my email here. And then you can email that individual with your notes and say, hey, I saw this that was posted. And then you can come in here and ask your question. It's not necessarily in our system just because of the open meeting laws, but it will go to your email here if you'd like.
And you keep mentioning the open meeting law. So there's pretty much anything that is in here, with the exception of executive session stuff, that's all employable.
Absolutely. Yeah. And we are, just to kind of go off that a little bit, we're partnered with NISBA and have been for about eight years now. So it's kind of nice because you have their support as well. So if you guys do have any questions about, you know, what, what has to be public, what can be private? They use the system that they use what we're seeing right now, the board docs pro feature. So you can always contact them, James or Bernadette over at NISBA, and they're more than happy to walk through. And our product experts, we actually have a few trainers that were on boards in, in the state of New York as well. So for any questions or best practices, they can, they can walk through that with you all as well.
Corey, during your research, did you get pricing data and all that?
So pricing is done through NISBA, so we don't necessarily know the exact cost. That'll happen if you guys plan to purchase through a BOSI's, you will receive state aid. How that'll look is NISBA will contact your BOSI's once confirmed and they'll work on that agreement for you all. What we're seeing here is for your, and let me mention that you guys do get preferred pricing through that partnership. Board docs pro is 11,000, but that could vary based off of your state aid. So that's just our list cost, but it could be much less than that depending on the state aid you receive. So what I've done is I've actually already contacted James to reach out to you all to, to get in touch with your BOSI's to begin, you know, that pricing setup for you guys. So you should be receiving that here shortly.
Does it matter that we're not currently a, a district that's a member of NISBA?
It does not. You still will get preferred pricing.
Okay. Anybody have other questions? Drew, thank you very much for your time tonight. We sure appreciate the presentation.
No, thank you all. And if there's any questions that come up after, Corey, feel free to share my contact information. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that come up. All right. Thank you all. All right. Enjoy your evening. Bye-bye.
So based on your conversation and move forward with getting those pricing, the pricing through BOSI's to do that. You want the next time to be me, I think to give you an in-depth overview of teams, we could as well. That is something that number one, will not cost us any. Number two, does have a save chat function that you can chat back and forth and save those chats. And lastly, does have an application. So you can easily download it to your phone. It's not the best looking app, but it, it does function pretty well.
Jonathan, can I ask you a question real quick? When we get to HIRI1 manual, is that going to be keyword searchable?
HIRI1 works with board docs and when we get the manual, we actually have a copy of it now. I'm sorting through it, trying to come up with a plan that I could, if I'm going through it. But board docs, they will upload directly to board docs and it will do all the policies separated for us from a giant 600-page document. Otherwise, we would have to do it internally.
But my, I guess my question is, if, if we just, if we say we're not going to do board docs, and we, we're going to use our, our website, we're going to use Teams, we're going to use the tools we already were paying for, is it as user-friendly to find things? Because I know I've always gotten frustrated trying to search through policies by using a word or two.
I have not been able to use our current website to find, or find individual words in the policies themselves.
So, but the new manual won't have that capability or?
Based on what he said, it, it should because board docs is.
No, if we don't use.
What if we don't use, what if we don't use board?
We can keep it in a solid PDF that is 600 pages long and that's the other alternative to making it searchable.
You can, I mean, there is a way to search in OneNote. You can, it just can't link to other policy. And I'm saying it's clunky. I'm not saying it's easy.
That function in Teams, which is essentially OneNote, would be very complicated. It would not, it would not offer the ease of search.
But to search by keywords?
Just doesn't matter whether it's worth the money. Do or yes, pretty much. Yeah. I'll just ask Jonathan, hey, where do I find this word?
That's right.
Yeah.
I guess it won't cost us anything to find out the price for board docs. So we don't necessarily need another presentation for that. I would like to see Teams as adapted for board use. Is anyone else interested in Teams as a damage?
I would, but I just want to, I'd like to have you out that before we, Corey, spend all this time on that, I would like to make sure that that is okay from a freedom of information law perspective. There could be a bunch of communications then that are stuck within a Teams platform. And if we have a community member who wants to foil that, you don't know how that works. And I think that before you spend your time researching it, we should find out if it's even an acceptable platform for us to be.
Well, I think that's what Drew was alluding to every time we asked that question of, is it a communication?
Well, I guess where we with OneNote, are we the same?
I, I think it's whether, are you saying whether it's extractable to give if we get foiled or what? Because right now we have email. We're emailing each other.
I don't know. Right. That's all foillable and that's all that lives. I know about emails. I know whether, I've never used Teams, so I don't understand. Can you fully delete a message? Where do those messages go? Where are they going to live? If somebody wants to foil a conversation that you and I had on Teams six months ago, is it still there? I, I don't know.
There's a, Corey will set up a retention policy for that. There's a policy set up. Corporation set up all that.
But then again, I don't want to get too far ahead of this, but that's really on you. Like if you choose not to save a chat, that's, there's nothing I can do about that. Right? So you have the option to either save or not save a chat as you're going back and forth.
So the company I'm with right now, we use Teams a lot and the chats just go on and on and on. And you can go back months to buy things.
Keyword searchable.
Yeah, word search one. And, but it can be limited. It can be. But again, it would have to, we got, you know, the mindset would have to be, it's just like email.
Yeah.
We don't put foillable stuff in email, right? Anything you don't want in the public, you don't put any of that. So.
So frontier conditions they have. All the branch I work in, everyone has a retention policy. So no matter what it is, if one year goes away. So.
That's something to think about.
Yeah.
I think, I think we're, our forum exposure is going to be secondary for that.
Right. No. And I, I started thinking about it because of what Drew said and he kept raising the open meeting law concerns.
I'm just, I'm, I'm curious as to user-friendly, you know, in terms of that we already have OneNote that user notes goes into before agendas go into it stuff. And if we, if we left it, let's say, go with Teams, what does that change other than we're not emailing each other?
Right.
Is there some interface that changes how we interact as a board with cabinet?
We'd have to see that.
And does cabinet have to change what they're doing? I mean, I think that that's the other
Yeah.
real important piece is that, you know, we're communicating amongst each other. If all of a sudden you're having to, you know, post something on one thing or send it to the board separately because of some system that we're using that eliminates ease of communication.
Yeah, that's.
I think the, I think the setup and the navigation of OneNote and Teams is similar. So I, I came from a Google system, so I had to learn both of them this, this first year. We don't utilize the chat system in Teams internally that much. So Lori, what I think I hear you asking is for Teams, but really for any platform, what's our vulnerability or liability around foillable information?
Right. We just have to make sure that the information is still going to exist so that we could produce it in advance if we're hired, right?
And we don't want to add an extra step to the work that y'all did.
Are you using Teams already or no?
Yes, this is a Team.
I, well, we're a Microsoft district. Do, is that a platform?
Yeah. So we are converting to using more Teams. We are toggling between OneNote and Teams right now. So again, I don't think it would be a significant change in process, OneNote or Teams. But I do want to think about just the, the intent to communicate better amongst the board and cabinet. That feature.
It's just more intentional communication versus having these tools to do it.
And I think. It remains to be seen if teams will provide a more efficient way to communicate. Cause honestly, reply all, sometimes you get off different branches and people don't reply all to the latest message. And I've noticed there's been a lot of message fragmentation, which makes it difficult to follow and then balls get dropped, things like that as well.
And that might be user, that's, that's what I mean by communication platform versus, you know, we had talked about that a little about communication platform versus human.
No, no. And I agree with you, but I think there are different ways, different platforms present maybe more intuitive. To make those connections. And this is just something.
I'm not, I'm not.
There's a problem.
Right.
Kind of, at least explore some.
And it's been. Outlook web access is not as, for me, user friendly is Outlook. So. Right now, I've been, since I've been on the board looking at email throughout what I, that's, because I have. Not on my phone, but yeah, not on my phone, but on my laptop. So. So yeah, anyway. Well, so.
So do we want to hear from Corey about teams? That's the question. I think those questions are cool.
That's, that's completely up to you guys. The next time you meet, I would be more than happy to spend some time with you on teams. I've already reached out to Drew as far as unit pricing for BOSI's for.
Can we kick your own?
I think conversant, you should.
You know, I'd almost want to say, as you guys migrate further to teams. Maybe we migrate with versus us saying, all right, we're migrating now.
Right. I agree with that. I think board docs and teams are apples and oranges. That's different platforms that are completely different services.
I agree that's migrated currently from one note to two teams.
So Hilton, Hilton.
I, I agree that the board docs is, because you're talking about a storage of.
Board docs is almost analogous, analogous to our, our current usage of one note. It's just, it's kind of a different one note. Not really a true case as well.
All right, all right. But as the district progresses to teams, we will progress with. Which is us trying to say we're doing it next month.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, no, I don't think, I don't think there's any urgency here. It's just.
Well, and also I, I don't think the presentation would make sense until. You're at a point when you think it would make sense for us to. Yeah.
When you feel it's the right time, we can easily work on our end to set up teams for you and then work you for that.
And then some of us who communicate with things like post it now. Would probably need a little tutorial.
Understood. Absolutely. Or they try to work it.
Yes, thank you. So we've got one more agenda item, which is the policy public expression. Jonathan's making his way up. We have shared this for a few weeks in our one note or news. So this is an opportunity for us to review that policy and answer any questions that you might have as a first read.
So I don't have a, a slide presentation since the last, since the last meeting. I did just check out the relocalization for four docs and one district has PDFs posted, which are searchable. But on others, it is a essentially just a web page and that is word searchable as well. Much better than. And even the one that doesn't search internally, so the word doc.
Yeah.
So you've spent a lot of time going through our policies and we should have some official way to access them.
Correct. A lot of work for Marcy to help, and for you to help make those decisions happen. With 3220, based on the discussion that happened at the last meeting, the only change that I made to this was really to adjust the word. People to residents so that it was clear that the individuals who would be speaking at the meetings would need to be residents. I added in an organization based within the district. At first I started with a, with a business incorporated there within, but I figured that could limit like our foundation or other, anything that's not officially incorporated. So I went with the organization, just as Larry was saying, and added a little definition of residents in the definition of residents there. That's really the only change. I don't have any other questions from any of the board members. If you have anything I can address right now if you want, or.
Very cut and dry.
It's, I'm just out of curiosity, is residents defined by people actually providing your address?
So we have that on the form. I don't necessarily, I, I would question whether that's. Necessary, yes, for residents, but whether they should be now, especially now that we're broadcasting these and putting them on, on the internet. Whether the individual should be giving their phone number and address at each of these meetings when they come to speak.
Yeah.
Maybe on the form itself. It's not in the policy as it is written now. We could adjust the form because they would need a way to show that they are residents.
I think that, I think that that would be. At times, I think in some people's minds have changed and we used to have a phone book and everybody's name and number was listed with your address and nobody thought much of it, but. I think some people do have a little more sensitivity in terms of stating their. Address and phone number and stuff like that publicly. I'm not saying, I'm not saying here or there. I'm just, I'm not saying I'm saying this pop, what's written in the policy. I just wanted to make sure in terms of residency though, we're not asking for things like, there has to be an option other than just like. Driver's license, you know?
This is not that specific. This is not it is that procedural that, that. If, even if we did some sort of regulation, I don't know if Hury one has a regulation governing this, but it could just be limited to what we put on the form from a procedural side.
Okay.
It's, it's just that there's national advocacy groups coming in more than.
Understand. Yeah, I do. Yeah.
So I guess I would ask, this is. It's recorded as first read. Is there a need for a second read? Or are you, are you comfortable with making a motion to approve tonight?
I can make a motion approve. I, there's no problem with the board doing it.
Okay. So I'll call for official motion. Dave?
Make a motion approve.
I'll second.
Megan. All in favor? So.
All right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Hey, meeting evaluation. Before I get to that, it's me. This is kind of like Kill Roberts rules or something. I did send out a thing about NISBA. We just got an invitation to campus construction. Event during the convention out there in Syracuse and stuff. So. If you guys can start figuring out whether you're going to go or not go and let Marcy know, please. October 27th, let me see.
Twenty seventh to twenty ninth.
Yeah. Twenty seven, twenty nine. So there is a, a law conference on the 26th and a, usually there's a communications conference as well. The, the day before, but the, the kickoff is on Thursday, the 27th. So the best thing is to be there. Unless you want to get up early and drive there, be there on Wednesday night and stay through to Saturday morning when they have the wrap up and stuff. I've not yet seen, probably because we're not members, we will not probably be looking at the motions and things that they're putting forward and stuff. So there's usually a whole process that we go through to read over all these things and we won't be doing that this year. So please consider going. It is, it is a great place to find out about things, but it is a lot of time to.
Would we have to, I know it's probably recommended that we go for three days, but is there a certain days where?
I, I think you pay with the price and you go when you want to go. Whether it's not like you can go for a day and pay a different price. Okay. And it doesn't even like put miles on, you can drive back and forth there, but. Anyway, all right. So with that, meeting evaluation, any comments, concerns, questions? Here or none?
I make a motion that we enter executive session for the purposes of discussing collective negotiations with targeting units. Employment history of particular persons and a student's record, which is a matter made confidential by federal law.
Have a second, please. Dave, in favor? Six O, moving into executive.